Good evening, fellow citizens and voters of Southampton. Welcome to our annual town meeting 2023. I'm Robert Floyd, your town moderator. It's indeed a pleasure and a privilege to serve you all these years, and I look forward to next year as well. For full transparency and disclosure, I also serve you as being Southampton Cemetery Commission Clerk. There is no compensation for this, privilege to serve you. I devote my time as clerk at Southampton Cemetery Commission to be the contact for burials, requests, and all communication matters for the commission. May is a busy month. Our annual town elections next Tuesday, May 16th, noon to 8:00 p.m. We have spring into Southampton at the following weekends, Saturday, May 20th, with activities from our Edwards Public Library for the book sale for his Congregational Church of Southampton, Swords for Ploughshales Women's Club Plant Sale, Mothers Club Tag Sale, and Open Space Committee Walk, and Hazel Young Wildlife Sanctuary. And one more note, border roads and public safety, please join town officials and community members for May 24th, facilitate a discussion related to town residents' expectations for firefighting, water service availability, and current Southampton capacities. Together, you'll learn about our rural infrastructure and its strengths and challenges, and work to identify possible approaches to addressing gaps and issues. So that's Wednesday, May 24th, 6:30, right here, Williamian Our School. Our town meeting is a business meeting of Southampton, a legislative branch session called pursuant to a posted warrant, the official record of what will be discussed, and the only topics on which our town meeting tonight may actually take action. I read the warrant, and you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting and test the copies thereof in six usual places and set town seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not, and make due return of the warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting as aforesaid, given under a handsake first day of May in the year 2023, signed by the Select Board, tested by the Constable. This is a certified I have served the written warrant by posting and test the copies thereof in six usual places, seven days at least, before the time of holding said meeting, Constable. Warrant to Southampton pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Southampton by posting and test the copy at the Southampton Town Hall and five or more other places designated for the posting of such notice, seven days before holding such meeting, Constable Jared Hamon. In some towns, the town clerk reads this, maybe next year. Traditionally, for years, I hibernate the day before a town meeting. I reread the articles, motions, and the like, a solid day of meditation. Yesterday, I found myself in Mount Hebron Cemetery in a borough of Queens in New York City. My best friend, Charlotte, South Beach Miami Beach Charlotte, lost her 102-year-old mother, Hilda. I knew Hilda for four decades and loved her and her excellent Jewish cooking. I had to go. It was an eventful 10 hours. It's what we do in life. A tradition I started here some 17 years ago is to honor those we love who have moved on ahead. And we have a moment of silence now in keeping with Southampton's culture for those who have moved on ahead since we last met. Tonight, our annual town meeting is being broadcast locally on Channel 191. El Guoella is streaming on the e-media website, easthamptonmedia.org. That link can also be found on the e-media Facebook page and on Instagram. Thank you, Tim Riley, Jackson Foot, and e-media. A warrant. Articles enter a warrant that is posted in at least five locations and warrants the people of a legislative meeting. You have heeded the warning. Attendance used to be mandatory and tardies were fined. It continues to be a purist form of democracy. The executive branch of our town's government, the Select Board, Finance Committee, Treasury Collector, Accountant Clerk, Town Administrator have worked hard several evenings a week with meetings to create and weigh in on the articles for tonight's town meeting warrant. Their work is done. Although some of these executive branch members sit up front by our tradition, they individually do not have more of a vote or say tonight than interview in our annual town meeting. Town moderators' rules, not town council legal opinion, apply while our town meeting is in progress. Your moderator permits commercial TV cameras, a privilege, not a right, if and only if they agree to remain in the back of the town meeting room on the far side of the floor line or outside the building, not in aisles or hallways. Again, this is a legislative branch of our government and is not subject to open meeting law. Duties of the moderator. My role as a town moderator is to facilitate, provide an open process that voters trust, and administer rules and guidelines in an even-handed manner, fully, impartially, consistently, regardless of who you are, not assured of any particular outcome. I ensure those who wish to address this town meeting have opportunity and ensure the integrity of a town meeting stays as intact as possible. Both sides need will be heard in each article. No one has ever been denied to speak at a town meeting I have moderated. Moderator's authority is over process, not outcome. I leave the outcome to you, the fully informed voters. Procedures accomplish things instead of manipulating town meeting proceedings. I help every dedicated voter as I serve the town, so if you're inexperienced here, hold your back. Allow me to walk through the process tonight. Anyone may challenge my process with a point of order yelled from your seat. I will invite you to the mic, where you then describe what pending action is frivolous, irrelevant, illegal, or contrary to proper procedure. Any attempt to misuse it as a device that you serve the floor will be dealt with firmly. Duties of your voters. Your responsibility? Be the legislative branch of our town government for tonight's articles. You have power to make laws, the power of the purse, and to exercise your freedom of speech. Speaking and participating at a town meeting is a right, the like all rights that should not be abused or denied, ground rules, courtesies, guidelines. It's important to set them early and stick with them. There's plenty of seats up front. They're all blank. We deserve them for you coming in late, so come right up. Town meeting is a legislature, subject to its own rules within the Commonwealth laws. It needs rules. One of my duties as your moderator to protect the rights of individuals against a legal approachment, unintentional or otherwise. Our town meetings are conducted in accordance with general laws, our bylaws, traditional customs, and practices we have followed for many years, with guidance by the principles of rules of conduct and town meeting time, a handbook of parliamentary law. It's an organic process as our customs, traditions, and practices evolve. Once a motion is read and I'm asked to receive the second, then I apply the pro, then a con statement. All discussions must be relevant to a motion under a warrant article and within the scope of each article before us, merits or lack thereof of the motion. Is when after a comment is ruled out of order or scope, the speaker continues to debate the moderator. That's when the speaker is directed to sit down. Speaking at the mic, are you ready to contribute something new? Please approach the mic up front, stand in line to be recognized and turned by the moderator. First come, first heard. I recognize speakers only standing at the mic unless it's a point of order. Address the moderator, state your name and address clearly. Please direct your opinions, questions, answers, and address all remarks to me, your town moderator. Don't speak directly to the voters. This is designed to prevent lecturing, bullying, intimidation, and cross-examinations. Town meeting contact is the conduct, is the moderator's responsibility, as authorized by General Laws, Chapter 37, Subchapter 15 and 17. You can speak up to five minutes at a time, provided you stick to the subject of the motion at hand and address me, not the town meeting audience. And no more than twice in any article, except to correct an error or answer a question. Please allow everyone opportunity to be heard before your request to be heard a second time on any article. Remarks concise, to the point. I will allow anybody who previously spoke to address the meeting a second time with a new point of view or rebuttal. No repetition, no repetition. Before you vote yes or no, you individually are free to question, to amend, not encouraging this, and will not discourage this either, and to table or kill any motion that is legislated on the civilized way. Press examinations are out of order. Rude behavior, especially shouting, bullying, lecturing, personal attacks will not be tolerated. No applause. This meeting has its sacred roots and traditions for hundreds of years. Please respect your neighbors who may vote differently than you. Please, no applause, no bullying. Anyone willing to comply with these rules will be removed after their third warning, so let this be our first warning. Anyone unsatisfied with the lack of information for an article may motion to adjourn this town meeting at a time certain for the presenter to obtain the necessary information. Our pre-appointed counters, when needed, will count a section as a pair, then compare counts. When they do not agree, count resumed for a complete and accurate count to be announced out loud, so all can hear. They count from the front to the back. Rights to speak, these rules of the quorum are unique to town meeting. We usually vet someone at this time of the meeting. A rumor has it the planning board has a consultant. Does anybody have that name? Paul, come up here, please, and announce the name.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Deamon, Pomeroy Middle Road, Planning Board. The board consultant is Richard Harris, the retired senior planner for the town of Southampton.
Okay, hearing no opposition, will allow Richard Harris to speak for us this evening. Done. Reason to move order of the articles tonight? None. Simply because someone states something, it does not make it true. Majority leaning towards approving or denying does not make it right by itself. Listen courteously. Vote exactly as you think right. Thank you all for your patience and respecting everyone tonight. These guidelines will assist us in a more efficient meeting. May I hear a motion for Article 1, please? Motion for Article 1, please.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to move that the town vote to transfer appropriate the amount of $222,266 from free cash to the capital stabilization fund.
Motion made or seconded?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This is a different figure that you have in your program. Would like to speak on this, please.
Edward Gibson, Town Administrator. Mr. Moderator, this year, the free cash actual certification came in higher than what was my conservative estimate. That's why the figures of these next three articles will actually differ. But these are normally set by policy, 35% to the capitalization, minimum of 35% to capital stabilization, 30% to operating stabilization, and a minimum of 10% to Article 3, the OPEF fund. This year, all the free cash, 100%, will be actually transferred, appropriated to these three counts.
Okay. Anyone who want to speak in opposition to Article 1? Anybody have any thoughts, questions? Seeing none will vote. All those in favor of the motion for Article 1, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 1 passes unanimously. I read reasons to move order of articles probably too quickly. There is a motion ready to move the order.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to motion to move Article 24, Community Preservation Article, and the articles that follow it up to between seven and eight, Articles seven and eight, so we can get some of the younger families out with their children a little bit earlier than possible, if that's okay.
We have a motion to move Articles 24, 25, 26, 27, and place them in between Articles seven and eight. Who would second that motion?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. I would hope that they would stay to finish the meeting, because there are a lot of articles
that they should be here for also, but it is a Tuesday night and school is tomorrow, so that's just my reasoning.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition of this motion? Any comments? So we're going to vote to move Articles 24, 25, 26, and 27 in between Articles seven and eight. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, indicate by saying nay. Unanimous, so we're going to move those articles. May I hear a motion for Article 2, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $198,512 from free cash to the operational stabilization account.
Motion made or seconded?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please?
Mr. Moderator, this amount will meet the minimum threshold of 30% of my policy of transferring from free cash to the operational stabilization fund.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition of this article? Any questions, comments? Seeing none will vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 2, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 2 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 3, please?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to transfer $63,504 from free cash to the other post-deployment benefits account.
Motion made or seconded?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please?
Mr. Moderator, this amount will exceed the 10% minimum threshold required of transfer from free cash to the OPEF account.
Thank you. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of this motion, of this article? Comments, questions? Seeing none will vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 3, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 3 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 4, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into a five-year contract for postage regime lease at Town Hall for all town departments presented in Article 4 of the warrant for the May 9, 2023 annual town meeting.
Motion made or seconded?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please?
Mr. Moderator, the lease on the current postage regime has come due. It's time to lease another one, and any lease over three years in length requires the approval of town meeting, so we are asking for town leader's approval.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, will vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 4, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 4 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 5, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer appropriate from the operational stabilization account an amount of $350,387 to be used in the operational base budget A for the Hampshire Regional School District assessment for the town of Southampton for fiscal year 2024, as presented in Article 5 of the warrant for May 9, 2023 annual town meeting.
Thank you. May I hear a second, please?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak for this, please?
This request is to add the $350,000 in order to honor our obligation to put forward the full budget as requested by the Hampshire Regional School Committee. And this is identifying one of the sources of funding that will come up in the next article.
Thank you. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this article? Any questions, any comments? Seeing none, will vote. All those in favor of the motion for Article 5, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 5 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds majority requirement. May I hear a motion for Article 6, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate $19,729,587 to fund all municipal departments and the public schools during fiscal year 24, as shown in the town's annual operating budget for fiscal 2024, and to fix the salaries for all elected officials as shown and identified in the column labeled Base Budget A, FY 2024 Budget, from taxation, $17,500 from WPAT loan, and $125,000 from ambulance fees, and $350,387 from operational stabilization. With these three different funding sources, the total operating budget for FY 24 is $20,222,467.47.
Thank you. Now hear a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. As town moderator, it's been my tradition and belief to divide the question, to split a large-figure budget like this into several parts, so we will continue with our tradition to do so. We will vote on each part, and that will suffice for voting for the entire budget. So the first group is general government, $869,379.24. Anyone like to address this? Anyone who want to speak on this one way or the other? Seeing none will vote. For the general government, for budget A, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The general government passes unanimously. The next group is public safety. And that figure is $2142,437.42. Anybody wish to speak on this, pro or con? Seeing none will vote. All those in favor of the public safety budget, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The budget for public safety passes unanimously. Education, I'm going to divide this further. I'm going to divide this into local school and Hampshire Regional. The local school is $774,422.12, and the Hampshire Regional is $56,279.1. Who would like to address this, please?
Point of order?
Yes.
Are we taking them separately, or?
Yeah, we'll take them separately. We'll take the local school first. Thank you. Anybody wish to comment on the local school figure? Pro or con? Seeing none will vote. All those in favor of the figure for local school, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Figure for local school under education passes unanimously. May I hear any discussion for Hampshire Regional?
Mr. Moderator, John Lomroth, Vice Chair of the Select Board, 218 College Highway. I speak against this line item for the following reasons. Due to, and it's going to come up with the override request that ties into this, I speak against it in essence because of the E and D calculations that have been done, and the use of those funds over a period of time. In looking, E and D is excess efficiency accounts. It's the school department version of free cash. Between 2014 and 2023, there's been a surplus cumulative of over $6 million, of which those funds of state within the school are up at Hampshire Regional and not returned to the taxpayers. That averages $616,000 a year out there. Southampton makes up 55% of that, so that's $339,163 that leaves our tax base to Hampshire Regional that we do not have available for us. The number is very similar to the override request that we're going to ask for for our England service. As of fiscal year 2023, the current surplus that Hampshire Regional was $1.3 million of available funds. It followed a 55%. That means that $726,000 came from the taxpayers of Southampton that is sitting there. In addition to this, there is a school choice balance account. This is funds that the school gets when out-of-district children come into the school for school choice. That balance, as of the April 2023 report that was published, is $1.7 million. Again, 55%, that's $986,000 for Southampton. The E and D reports were due on October 31st. The district didn't file theirs until March 30th, primarily due to a turnover in the office that resulted in this. I'm asking that we vote this down. Voting this down does not mean that the Hampshire Regional budget will fail because two communities have to do it. And if we are successful in voting it down, I would ask that the elected representatives of Southampton that serve at Hampshire Regional go back to the table and go through line by line, determine how over a period of 10 years, there's been a $6 million surplus, where we're struggling with the England service.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on this? Come forward, watch your feet on the.
Mr. Moderator, Kim Schott, Wayne County Road. I'm the chair of the Hampshire Regional School Committee.
Speak right into more directly in the mic.
Okay, is this good?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I'm here to request that the voters approve the budget as we requested it. 100% of our increase this year is driven by increases in non-discretionary costs, including transportation, health insurance, special education, fuel, and electricity. Because of those things that are outside of our control, we did cut costs in areas within our control to reduce the overall increase in the budget. And we believe that the budget that we have presented represents the actual needs of the school for fiscal 24. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on this?
Maureen Groden, H. Shoreland.
Maureen Groden, H. Charlene. Happy Nurses Week, everybody, especially the nurses in the audience. This budget cuts the nurse leader position $10,000. It also changes her position so that she becomes the primary sub with the school nurses. Nobody else has to sub and give up their job. In order to do that, this particular position helped us dramatically get through COVID-19, speaking to DPH, speaking to CDC, speaking to the Northampton Coalition, speaking to all the boards of health. I'm completely against this decision, and it is not a level-funded budget. There's an increase of a grant position of 50%, and we have a grant writer currently up there. I'm also against it for the same reasons that John Lumber just mentioned. I'm not sure if everybody in the room is aware of this, but you just approved taking money from operational stabilization to fund Hampshire Regional's assessment because we didn't find out about the excess deficiency amounts and the vote that the school committee took in order to how to give that money back to the towns. And so therefore, we have to take the money out of our operational stabilizations and then get the money back with free cash. So I'm against the Hampshire Regional budget.
Thank you. Anybody, sorry?
Sierra Simmons, 242 College Highway. I'm not sure if this is a point of order or a question I should say here, so I'm just gonna go through it. So what happens if we vote against this? Does the whole budget fail to pass?
We'll have somebody answer that. Thank you for the question.
Voting against this individual line item, the previous line items that all passed would still go in force, assuming the remaining line items pass, those would go in place. This would still, in theory, be, it'd be one of five, two of five towns had to vote against this. We're the first town up. If we vote against it, one other town has to vote against it. And then there's a process that triggers, it's still same place because we already put the money in there from operational stabilization. The next mechanism would be the Hampshire Regional School Committee would have to go back to the table. They don't necessarily have to change it. They just have to listen to the reasons why we vote against it, and either put forward the same identical budget again, or revise budget for a medical.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Moderator, Kim Schott, One Each County Road. May I get permission for our school business administrator to address the meeting? He's not a resident of Southampton, but he is an employee of the school district.
You work with that city?
He's, he, to talk about the, to talk about some of the points that we brought up.
Is he an employee?
He's an employee of the Hampshire Regional School District.
What does he do at Hampshire?
He is the school business administrator.
And what is his name?
Michael Buell.
Anybody in opposition? Otherwise, we'll let him speak. Harry, none of us?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Michael Buell, the new business administrator. So a couple of things to clarify relative to the excess and deficiency account of the district. As, as we know, the regional school districts have to have an E and D account. The average level of that E and D account is, I don't have the exact numbers, but Mr. Lumber, it's about $600,000 over recent years. However, for this coming year, after giving funds back to the towns, the district is being, is returning $670,000 back to the towns. I think about $330,000 is coming to Southampton. The balance in that account would be $703,000, but of that $703,000, $367,000 is committed as part of this budget that was presented by the committee. So the E and D effective unencumbered balance, so the balance in that account is going to be about $336,000, which is lower than almost at any point since 2012, I believe the numbers that I researched yesterday were. So it is not accurate, say that the E and D account is exceptionally, exceptionally high. It would actually be lower at this point with this budget and the $670,000 returned to the towns.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the budget figure as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
Nay's habit. The budget item fails. Public Works? Figure of. If anybody wants to challenge my vote, you must stand and have six other people join with you, and then we'll do a count. We have two, three, four, five, six. Counters, please. All those in favor of the budget item, raise your card high so that we can count it. Orange light. Paul stands, but thank you for the challenge. Appreciate that. Now we know how many people are in the room. Public Works? $1,064,411.88. Anybody want to address that? Pro or con? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the Public Works amount, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The figure passes unanimously. Health and Human Service, $168,639.64. Anybody want to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the Health and Human Services amount, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It passes unanimously. Culture and Recreation? Anybody want to speak on this? Pro or con? Seeing none. All those in favor will vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The figure passes unanimously. Anyone who want to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Passes unanimously. Debt Service Principal, $434,543. Anyone who want to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Passes unanimously. And Debt Service Interest, $20,22467. No, sorry. I thought that was high. My little brain cell said, slow down. That's high. No, keep reading, keep reading. My bad. $135,515.62. Teamwork. Anyone who want to speak on this? Pro, con? Seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Passes unanimously. And we have our budget for Article Six. Now here a motion for Article Seven, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a supplemental sum of money of $332,555.29 for the purpose of funding the following departments and accounts in the operating budget for the town. Fire EMS department, police department, fire, fire EMS department, associated employee benefits for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, provided, however, that the vote taken hereunder shall be expressively contingent upon approval by the voters of a Proposition Two and a Half, so-called override question, allowing the town to raise the additional amount appropriated hereunder, outside the limits imposed by said Proposition Two and a Half in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 59, Section 21 CG.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I'm going to divide the question, going to divide it, and we're going to talk about the two parts of the budget that there's a delta increase, public safety and employee benefits. So under the proposed motion for this article for Budget B, the public safety increases $300,820.9, and the employee benefits $31,735.20. So I propose we talk about public safety first and vote on it. We talk about the employee benefits next, vote on it, and then we vote on the entire motion. How's that? Got a plan? All right. Who would like to address the increase in public safety?
John Workman, Fire Chief. Just before I came to town 10 years ago, the Select Board at that time had stepped up and really understood that the best service for this town was to move from an ambulance service that just had basics and intermediates to an ambulance service that included paramedics. Paramedicine offers a lot more to a community for anyone that needs ambulance service. With a basic-level service, you're basically transporting. With a paramedic-level service, you're giving therapies and, and medicines that can bring a patient back so that their outcome from an event is shortened. They've got the best pre-hospital care that you can get with a paramedic that finds you on the scene, loads you into their ambulance, and begins treatment prior to the hospital. So 10 years ago, I came in as chief to put this together. It is a, I applaud the decision of the Select Board at that time to do that. The challenge that I've had since I came and since in my 10 years of being here is there's never been a funding source that's been attributed to this, to pay for the ambulance service as it's moved forward. The Select Board at that time had signed an agreement with the state that would cover about four or five years that would increase the level of service. So we started with a very basic level of service and then increased the amount of paramedics that were on shift and were available to cover the town for emergencies. But the Select Board's previous, subsequent to that initial that had put it through, faced a challenge of no funding. So in 2016, 17, we came before the town and said, the state has called us out in the fact that we're not meeting the level of service that we signed to contract with. And at that time, we had voted for a second shift, and we, the Fire Department received funding to bring more staffing in to cover more hours. At that point, when we got in that funding, the department has always been one full-time person. That's me. And all of the other members that serve as paramedics and basics and firefighters are all call firefighters that come from full-time jobs and step up for hours of operation to cover the ambulance. So when we'd gotten additional money, we covered more shifts. We got to the point where, especially during COVID, the town had seen that we had seen that comparative wages we needed to increase and, and put a competitive wage out because it was being increasingly difficult to get paramedics and basics even to come in and work when we weren't really paying competitive wages at all. Once the, the Select Board, which is in place now, had voted for that, we had a tremendous outcome. I'm proud to say that, that the paramedics and firefighters and EMTs that have come to service to work for Southampton are dedicated crew. We've covered most every shift. The challenges we have are at night where we, 40% of the time, it's hard for us to get a paramedic. Because paramedics, as a second job, it's easier for them to give up a day than it is to give up their family time. They've got all the commitments that we all have for our, for our ongoing jobs. And so although we cover all of our shifts, we may cover, 40% of the time, it's only covered with a basic-level ambulance service. The state came in and the state said, okay, you're, you've got your license to a paramedic-level service, but at night and some weekends, you're not performing to that level. And so there's a challenge, not just in EMS, but in many industries, where it's harder and harder to get people to, to work. We face that challenge certainly in the ambulance service. And so if they're part-time, coming in from home, I can't make them work. I can't hold them over to cover those shifts. So there really needs to be a better alternative. And I believe that we're, the better alternative, alternative is to have the ability to hire some full-time staff, even at minimal rates, so that you can get more coverage, get the paramedic-level coverage, to really bring the department into full being. We've always had the Highway Department, the Police Department, that have been funded with full-time people that make them viable departments. The ambulance department, since I've been here in 10 years, has really just been one full-time person, myself, and part-time people. So this is really the next step to bring us into being more of a full-time department. It's not a full crew. It's a partial crew. When we do comparisons to other communities of similar sizes, even with this two and a half override, extra additional funding, we are still below every other community that I could find as far as their budgets go for fire EMS service when they offer advanced-level service. So this is an important step for the ambulance, and we really look for the town. It's at this point, the Select Board's done what they can. It's really, the town at this point needs to say, we want an ambulance service that's paramedic-level so that my loved ones are taken care of with the best level of care that we can give them. And, and that's the standard for, for communities these days. And they need to vote to support that if that's what they would like for service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ian Ellingsworth, Police Chief. I requested some additional money to partially fund a full-time police officer. And the reason for that was in December of 2020, I'm sorry, December of 2020, the Massachusetts Legislature enacted the Police Reform Act. And one of the unintended consequences of that act was a result of essentially eliminating, eliminating part-time police officers. part-time police officers. Prior to the act, there was two forms of training. You had a full-time training and a part-time training. Town of Southampton has always relied on part-time police officers to augment the police force. However, as a result of that, the Reform Act, there's now a standardized training where all police officers have to have the same amount of train despite whether or not they work eight hours a shift, eight hours a week, or 40 hours a week. As a result, I've showing a significant decline in the amount of shift hours that our part-time officers are working. We're having less and less opportunities to hire part-time officers because of this legislation, only because the part-time abbreviated academy would allow people in other professions to work part-time as a police officer. That abbreviated academy no longer exists. So as a result, in December, I'm sorry, in calendar year 2020, part-time officers worked approximately 4,500 shift hours in Southampton. 20, calendar year 2022, they've worked 2,100 hours. So about a 54% decrease in shift hours that were, that the part-timers are working. Consequently, those shifts aren't getting filled. It's creating a heavier burden on the full-time officers to fill the shifts as well as the overtime budget. So as a result of that, I requested some extra money to fund a full-time police officer, another full-time police officer, which amounts to about 2,100 hours a year, shift hours a year, to support what I believe will be ultimately through attrition that will no longer be part-time officers.
Thank you. Anyone in opposition of this article? Anybody else want to speak on it? Any questions? Seeing none, will vote. I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Thank you.
Maureen Groden, Nate Charleene, in support of this. Our two chiefs have done a remarkable job the last few years through COVID, try to find enough staff to keep this community safe. We're limited to 2.5% on taxation and fuel prices alone. Between the Highway Department, Police Department, Fire Department is astronomical. We all know it. We put gas in our cars, unless we have electric cars, of course. But I just feel that Southampton's at a crossroads. We have 6,200 people and a growing senior population. My son, when he was at Norris, he ended up going to the hospital by ambulance. It is in our best interest as a community to have our own paramedic level service. The police are 24/7 around the clock, and I think we should have emergency medical service and firefighting capability around the clock in the station 24/7.
Thank you.
John Lombra, I would just add to that, that the request from the Police Department would allow the chief to maintain a two-person unit at all shifts and not run the risk of going down to just a sole police officer and then relying on other communities to come in and back us up. Regarding the Fire Department, the Chief Workman mentioned the deficiency by the Department of Public Health. You know, I think the perception of the voters is that we're manning an ambulance service at the paramedic level 24/7. And when they came in, it was determined that well over 100 shifts didn't meet that standard. That's 100 opportunities where we didn't provide the coverage that we believe, that the citizens believe we have. And I think the days of the 100% per diem are gone, as we're seeing with the Police Department, with the part-time, their version of perdiems, that this is an avenue we're coming to and that with these additional funds, and you'll notice in Article 15, there's another article coming up for 100 and some odd thousand dollars because as of right now, with the adjustment in wages, Chief Workman's been able to fill those shifts. So we have fewer shifts going empty, but it's eaten up all the revenue for payroll, and therefore there's only roughly two weeks' worth of payroll left for the paramedics. So when we get to Article 15, it's just, it's an ongoing issue. And we need to try and right the ship here.
Thank you.
Assuming we want to maintain 24/7 coverage at the paramedic level.
Thank you.
Jessica McConnell, 25th High Street. Mr. Moderator, could you ask Mr. Lombra to come back? He spoke about when we voted down the high school's budget because the high school owes us money and it was balanced out this override. I'm just wondering, if we pass the override, I know it then has to go to the town as a whole to be voted on a ballot. But if that money goes through, now we're in a surplus? I mean, how does that work? Because an override is like a permanent adjustment. So I'm just wondering.
I'll ask him to answer your question, John.
If you look at the supporting document that we went section by section on the budget, you'll notice that we voted on Column A. There's another column to the right where public safety and employee benefits, I believe, are the only ones that have adjustments in it. If the override passes, that's the budget that goes in place, with the exception of Hampshire Regional that already got voted down.
Thank you. Can I answer your question? Did it answer your question? Come back up and answer it again. Ask it again. And direct me, not to John.
So, Mr. Moderator, I understand that the Budget B is what goes into effect. But John had said that the school department owes us roughly $300,000, correct? Oh, can't ask that. Okay. So if that money comes back to us and the business administrator says that it should, then, then why do we need the override?
So specifically on that, the $340,000 that is coming back by a vote of the Hampshire Regional School Committee should have been as a form of credit on this year's fourth-quarter payment. So it will come in, the line will either come in as underspent and/or miscellaneous receipt that will get closed out and is unavailable until at the earliest October 1st, which is generally, you have to get free cash certified, and generally that can't happen until September 30th reports are filed.
Okay. Better? Okay. Anybody want to speak again, or still, or yet, on public safety? Section of this article, will vote on public safety, an increase of $300,820.09 for Budget B. All in favor? Please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Please indicate by saying nay. The budget passes by majority. Let's talk about employee benefits. Do I have expectations?
I don't know the difference off the top of my head, but the increase in employee benefits is specifically in one line, and that's the medical coverage for the anticipated hiring of employees that would then qualify for medical coverage.
That was $31,735.20.
Sounds right.
Okay. Anybody want to speak in opposition? Anybody want to speak at all? Seeing none, will vote for the increase of $31,735.20 on the employee benefits for Budget B. All in favor? Please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Please indicate by saying nay. Hearing no nays, it passes unanimously. Okay. Wrapping up this article, will vote on the motion that was read for Article Seven. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article Seven passes unanimously. Now, we're going to go, sorry? Yes, sir. Come right up.
Tim Gudat, 138 Valley Road. On Article Six, do we have to have a summary vote? We voted?
No, we don't.
Oh, okay.
We've done this before each year, and I've checked it with Boston. We do not.
Okay, because we had the summary vote on seven.
Thank you for that. Teamwork, appreciate it. I double and triple-checked that, believe me, years ago. Okay, let's go over to page 16, Article 24. Who would like to read the motion for Article 24?
Sierra Simmons, 242 College Highway. I'm a member of the Community Preservation Committee. Move that the town vote to hear and act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee for fiscal year 2024 and to allocate sums of money from the Community Preservation Fund as presented in Article 24 of the warrant of the May 9, 2023 annual town meeting.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this?
Sierra Simmons, 242 College Highway again. So this is just a summary of our budget.
Yeah.
And you're just gonna approve it. So.
We'll vote on it. We'll vote on it.
Oh, sorry. You're just gonna vote to approve or deny this budget? Okay. Sorry, I wasn't prepared to come do this.
Administrative this, so these are going into these buckets.
Okay, got it. All right. So the administrative expenses are going to be $7,500. And then reserves from the FY24 estimated revenues for Historic Resources Reserve, $51,925. From the FY24 estimated revenues for the Community Housing Reserve, $51,925. And from the FY24 estimated revenues from Palmroy Meadow Road Land, $53,800. It says Palmroy Meadow Land Purchase is only a memo item and will fulfill the 10% requirement for open space reserve.
We're good. We're good. Thank you.
And this is, it's based on the requirement by percentage. So that was just decided based on that.
Teamwork. Anybody else want to speak on this? Con? Motion made and seconded? Anybody want to speak on this? Let's vote on this then. Article 24 of the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 24 passes unanimously. Who would like to speak on our motion for Article 25, please?
Me again. Move that the town transfer the sum of $7,000 from Community Preservation Funds to the Conservation Commission for continued improvement of the Manhan Meadows Sanctuary Trail System by completing the footbridge over the Manhan River. Said funds to be transferred from Community Preservation Surcharges on designated account.
Great. Motion made, do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this briefly?
Art Lawrence, 113 Crooked Ledge Road. We received a grant approximately a year and a half ago from the state Trails Grant and matching funds from the Community Preservation. At that time, we were told that we have to get a Chapter 91 license slash permit to install the bridge over the Manhan River. We were told it would take approximately 200, the maximum time would be 270 days. And right now, we're looking at a year, and we still haven't received the license or the permit. After, excuse me, after numerous calls to the state authority, the DEP, I kept telling them, I'm not trying to put a bridge across the Connecticut, just the Manhan. And it still falls on deaf ears. So because of that delay, and I think all of you out there know that we have about a 9% inflation rate, we're anticipating additional, we're gonna need additional funding to finish this particular project. We're asking for 7,000 at this time. We doubt that will be enough. We'll probably have to dive into our own endowment funds. But at least it's a start. And of course, as always, if we don't use it, it goes back into the CPC. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition to this article? Any comments? Any questions? Seeing none, will vote. A motion on Article 25. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 25 passes by majority. Mayor, motion for Article 26, please.
Move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $65,000 from the Community Preservation Surcharges to the Southampton Greenway Committee for the town's local matching share of a Mass. Trails Grant for design process of the Greenway Bicycle and Pedestrian Path. Said funds to be taken from the Community Preservation Surcharges Open Space Recreation Account.
Motion made, do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this?
Aaron Towser, Palmroy Meadow Extension. Just to clarify, I'm speaking in favor of the article, but this is a required match amount for a grant totaling $320,000 for Mass. Trails. So not passing this would actually let us lose a substantial amount of funding slated for engineering and design costs for advancing the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody want to speak in opposition, or speak at all? Come right up.
Hello. Diane Rondo, Brickyard Road. I have a few questions about the process of what we're going through with the Greenway. Have we in fact purchased the property? Because speaking with the railroad, I was told that that was on hold.
So we did. We have the right to the.
The right.
In December, we purchased the right-of-way for the Greenway.
So there's some miscommunication as to the length of the Greenway. Is it 3.75 miles? Or is it 4.125 miles?
So the right-of-way grants access through a rail banking agreement. The right-of-way is for the entire town of Southampton, which does advance down Brickyard Road. That is not entirely the scope of the project as we speak. So we, as in myself, including the Greenway Committee, were working on Sheldon's Ice Cream at the intersection of Brickyard and Route 10 up to where the Manhan Rail Trail meets Coleman Road. So what the project will look like south of the Route 10 and Brickyard intersection is not part of our current scope.
So I guess my question is exactly what design level are you looking for? Just till to Sheldon's or all the way to the purchased?
Just to Route 10.
To Route 10. So what is the proposed?
That's not part of this article or no discussion.
Okay.
Coleman Road to Route 10, Sheldon's Ice Cream.
Okay. So you did indeed have a purchase of a right-of-way. Now, I haven't been involved with town politics in a very, very long time. So did this come to a vote for purchase?
Everything is passed through town meeting, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on this?
Caitlin Rooks, 189 College Highway. I'm also speaking in favor of this article because we also are on a timeline with Mass. Massachusetts Department of Transportation for a large sum of money. I believe it's $6.5 million. And we have a timeline that we need to achieve not just the right-of-way, but the design and engineering before 2025. So we need to continue to acquire funds to be able to meet that deadline, or we will be essentially losing millions of dollars to help construct the railway. And I'm sorry, construct the bike path. So I definitely really feel like we need to actually raise, I believe, a couple hundred thousand dollars more in order to make this project feasible before 2025.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on this?
Justin Baker, Camp John Road. So if we have a deadline on 2025 and you purchased it, what are we losing? Just the funds? Are you losing the real estate as well?
This is for design and engineering costs.
Ed, repeating what he said, this is for design, engineering costs?
Okay. So, all right. So, all right. Also, when, what is the plan? I know it's not tonight or anything like that, but I'm also on a deadline. I have to land on Brickyard Road, and if you're only going to Sheldon's, what do you plan on doing with?
There are no plans, and this isn't part of the article tonight. We're only up to Sheldon's and Route 10.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Don't be shy, come right up to the mic.
Diane Rondo again, Brickyard Road. So on this design, is there going to be abutters at this design level? Are they gonna be included with the design?
Who can answer that behind you?
Yes, recently, abutters were contacted with a letter, so we will be collecting public input. We're just starting that process now because the committee is just starting with the engineering firm. So abutters will be contacted directly again. The committee also meets regularly. We meet in public format. Comments are always welcome. The committee has an email address. We have several ways of being contacted, and you're always invited to communicate, ask questions, and join in progress as it happens.
I'm just going to address the email address thing he just spoke about. I did contact them and offered my email, and they refused it.
This is not part of the article. I'm sorry.
I'm just letting you know.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
I just wanna speak in favor of it. Maureen Grode, H URLane. When the master plan did a survey of town residents, there was a high percentage of people that responded, and number one priority of the town was the greenway.
Thank you.
Just a quick question for the committee. You sent letters for the abutters. Is that just for the design proposal or is that to everybody that abuts the railway?
Anyone answer that?
Because I did not really receive a letter.
Are you on the other side of Brickyard, of College Highway?
Correct.
Then you wouldn't.
Okay, that's my question. Just for the design project?
Mark Cassis, Greenway Committee member, speaking in favor, but also trying to clarify information. So the abutters, a letter was sent to those from, that abut from Sheldon's up to Coleman Road because that's a section that the design will be affecting. I wanna clarify the numbers. We had received Mass Trails Grant for the purchase of the right-of-way for the rail quarter with town support and prior state support. We got a $300,000 grant that is currently being used for early signs of, stages of design. We anticipate two more years to complete the design, and there's a grant for $320,000 that this $65,000 is meant as its match, and if we're lucky enough to get the grant, the $65,000 is required, and it will mean that the whole process gets delayed, including, as mentioned, loss of potential state paying for at least $6 million of construction grants. So this is an important step in the process where there's been a lot of time and effort gone in by the Select Board and other members to make this a successful project. To this point, just I hope that people are willing to support this.
Thank you.
John Sheehan, Palmroy Meadow Road, just down the street. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to strongly encourage everyone here tonight to support this motion to move $65,000 of CPC funds. I wanna publicly thank the Community Preservation Committee for being tuned in to needs all over the town. We've all seen money from CPC supporting many worthwhile causes. In my mind, this is an investment in the health of our community, the health of all citizens, from children up to elderly people, to have a safe place where we can walk, ride bikes, or whatever. Every other town has a bike trail. We are the only town between Northampton and New Haven that does not have a bike trail, and I'm kinda tired after years of explaining to people why we don't have a bike trail, but a lot of people want it. Last year during the COVID, it was very busy all during the last three years with the COVID and people being restricted on being outdoors in a safe way. One day, I was riding my bike, and there was a group of people, there were some children and adults, and I was getting on the trail at Coleman Road, and they had ridden the whole bike trail from Belcher Town where they lived, all the way through Amherst, Northampton, East Hampton to Southampton, and all of a sudden it came to an end. And they said, what's going on with such a beautiful trail? Why did they stop it? I said, well, it's a long story. How much, how much time do you have?
Thank you, John.
And so that has happened many times. I mean, we look back 100 years or so, and we had a connection between New Haven and Northampton with donkeys and horses dragging barges on the Northampton-New Haven Canal, and here we are in 2023, 100 years later, and we're arguing about putting a safe place for children to ride bikes or adults to walk and enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you, and urge you all to support this motion.
Thank you. Sorry, you can only speak twice at an article. Twice. I read that right at the beginning very clearly.
Hi, Jennifer Robert, Brickyard Road. I'm also a friend, founding member of the Friends of the Southampton Greenway, and there is a paper in the back there that you approved, Mr. Moderator, explaining more information about the proposed greenway and what has happened through spring of 2023. Thank you.
Cheers. Anybody else? Seeing none, we're gonna vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 26, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
The motion for Article 26 passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article 27, please?
Sierra Simmons, 242 College Highway. Move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $241,419.36 from community preservation surcharges to the Southampton Park Commission Committee to construct a fully accessible playground at Labrie Field. Said funds to be taken from community preservation surcharges on designated account.
Thank you. Motion made, and who do I hear second? Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
Good evening. Dylan Logley, 22 Caitlin Way, Park Commissioner. I speak on this proposal that was brought to us by the Magic for Matty Foundation, celebrating the life of a wonderful little girl in our town who sadly passed away. We were approached about building this magical playground, and I gotta say, they, all the credit to the organization, they've done all the work on this. They've done a tremendous job designing the playground that would fit within the current master plan for Labrie Field. It'll be sited right off the parking lot in the back next to where the planned field house would go, and it will be at the spot as stated that was designed in the master plan for Labrie. They've done an excellent job of sourcing out vendors, reducing costs at town by doing a community build, and in addition to that, establishing a fund for the lifetime maintenance of this playground to ensure that it's to be enjoyed by the town folks for many, many years to come. I believe there are members here from Magic for Matty, if any of them wanna speak more specifics about Matty's life or about the specifics of the playground that's being presented.
Okay, since you're speaking in pro, I'm gonna ask if there's anybody in opposition who would like to speak now at the beginning or later, and please invite whoever you'd like to speak on this. Continue.
Jen Capshaw and Juliette Locke, both town members, so they can speak.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Jen Capshaw. I live at 3 Kevin Drive. I'm Matty's aunt, and I'm speaking on behalf of my family, specifically my sister Nora Schmidt, brother-in-law Greg Schmidt, who are here tonight, and Matty's brothers Will and Patrick, along with our extended family. I wanna thank everybody here for considering the magical, Matty's magical playground. I know it's been a long night, and that will be at Labrie Field. I wanna thank the Parks Commission, the CPC, and the Select Board for your support of this program, this project, and transferring the funds from the CPC to make this vision a reality. I just wanna take one minute, again, I know it's been a long night, but tell you a little something about Matty. Matty, I think my brother-in-law said it best when he said that Matty leaves a little sparkle wherever she goes. They actually, at Nora's school, they put that on the, I don't know if anyone noticed in here, but there's a beautiful purple glittery path that lines the hallway, and they put a memorial up to Matty for that because I think it was sort of unanimous feeling that she did that. Matty was just one of those kids. She was kind, she was personable, and she just left a little bit of sparkle wherever she went. Matty was diagnosed in February of 2022 with pretty horrific brain cancer called ZIPG and fought a heroic battle for 10 months. That battle ended on New Year's Eve of this year. Since Matty passed away, the committee and the community has done so much to support Matty and our family, and it's been very important to us that Matty's legacy live on. So we're proposing this playground at Labrie Field, and there are really two reasons that we wanna do this. Number one, we really want to pay it forward to the Southampton community that we've been a part of, we've raised our children in, and we think it'll just be an amazing asset to everybody in town. And number two, we really want Matty's legacy to live on, and we want some good to come of this terrible thing that has happened. Already, we've had many fundraising events under the name Magic for Matty and have raised $125,000 that we've paid to other organizations such as Boston Children's Hospital, Bay State, and other organizations to support Matty's legacy. So in conclusion, I thank you, everybody here, for your support. Our family has lived in Southampton for over 14 years and supported the town in various ways through SIA and the Nora School. Our intention is to support this project for years to come. We do intend to do a community build and do all of the maintenance going forward to make sure that this park stays a beautiful place. I'm gonna hand it over briefly to Juliette Locke, who has built the playground here at Nora's School or led the efforts to build that, and we'll talk about its many features, including its handicap accessibility.
Thank you.
And in conclusion, I just wanna say that Matty would love this, and thank you very much.
My name is Juliette Locke, 106 Crooked Ledge Road in Southampton. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, Dylan and Jen, for introducing the project. I'm gonna try not to repeat what has already been said, but I do want to say that to get here tonight, it has been a little bit of a process, even though Matty's sweet life ended in such a short period ago. We have met numerous times with the Parks Department, the Community Preservation Committee, and we met with the Select Board also for an article you will hear later tonight for the naming, but all of these boards unanimously supported this playground, and we are very thankful for that. Throughout the process, I wanna make it clear that we obtained many playground proposals that would fit on this 80-foot by 45-foot footprint, and again, we're working within the footprint that was already designated as part of the Labrie Field Master Plan. We received many proposals, and we wanted to make sure that not only are we getting a playground that Matty would love to play on herself, but one that is smart when using the CPC funds. The most important feature of Matty's magical playground is that it is proposed to be ADA compliant with wheelchair accessibility through a ramp and two-foot deck system that runs through the middle of the play structure that has interactive panel activities. The playground features two slides, a large nest-style accelerator swing, and many climbing components that Matty would have loved. Two picnic tables are proposed with shade features, as well as four benches surrounding the play area. One of the picnic tables is proposed to be wheelchair accessible. Surrounding three sides of the playground, we're proposing shrubs, which will help shield the playground from the abutting neighborhood and serve as an aesthetic feature surrounding the playground. As Jen had mentioned, we did look at ways to help reduce the costs of building a playground. As people have spoken multiple times tonight about escalation, and it applies to playground construction as well. We are proposing a community build, so as part of the quote process through the playground vendors, they also have to give us quotes for the installation costs. And by doing a community build, you're able to cut off over $42,000 of cost of installation. And what the community build means is that Magic for Matty volunteers and town volunteers will work closely with a qualified company installation representative to get the project As Jen mentioned, the Magic for Matty Committee is also contributing to the cost for upkeep in future years to come. An example of upkeep costs would include but not be limited to replacing the wood fiber mulch, fixing the playground equipment as it deteriorates, and replacing plantings as needed. Many people in this town were lucky enough to know Matty, and if you were lucky enough to know her, you unfortunately knew that she was wheelchair-bound the last few months of her life. Our town does not currently offer a playground with wheelchair accessibility. The Magic for Matty Committee feels very strongly that a playground with wheelchair accessibility and family benches and tables and shade features will be an asset to not only Labrie Field but to our entire community.
Thank you.
I wanna say thank you to the town board's representatives, and we hope the community members support us here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing nobody else, we're gonna vote. The motion under Article 27, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 27 passes unanimously. May I go back now to Article 8? Mayor, a motion for Article 8, please. And Article 8 is a little different in your notes.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, we move that the town vote the budget of the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund as presented in Article 8 of the warrant for the May 9, 2023 Annual Town Meeting, with $212,833 being raised from Transfer Station Enterprise revenues and $19,975 to be appropriated in general fund indirect costs.
Motion made, do I hear second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please? What's your invitation?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. So the enterprise, Southampton Transfer Station is run under an enterprise fund, which is funded by the fees of the ratepayers. It's not part of the general fund, that's why we're voting on it as a separate article. We utilize past revenue and expense data to set fees to cover estimated and known expenses.
Thank you. Anyone wanna speak in opposition? Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on a motion under Article 8. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 8 passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article 9, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the budget of the Water Department Enterprise Fund as presented in Article 9 of the warrant for the May 9, 2023 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made, do I hear second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Timothy Godet, Valley Road, Water Commissioner. So the water enterprise, like the transfer station, the revenues for the water enterprise come from water fees and rates, so it's a separate fund and therefore it gets voted on separately.
Thank you. Anyone who wanna speak in opposition? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. Motion, Article 9, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 9 passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article 10, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer an amount totaling $11,000 within the Police Department operating budget accounts as listed in Article 10 of the May 9, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. Set sums to come from the fiscal year 2023 accounts listed.
Motion made, do I hear second? Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Ian Elingsworth, please, chief. This is just interdepartmental transfers as a result of some unexpected staffing shortages this year, energy costs and training costs.
Thank you. Anyone who wanna? Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 10. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 10 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 11, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer an amount totaling $2,759.20 within the Library Department operating budget accounts as listed in Article 11 of the May 9, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, said sums to come from the FY23 accounts listed.
Motion made and seconded?
Second.
I need a second, rather, thank you. Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. I'm Johanna Rodriguez Douglas. I'm the library director.
A little closer.
I think you have a, I'm Johanna Rodriguez Douglas. I'm the library director. There is a theme here of unexpected energy costs that you're going to be seeing on a lot of articles, and this is one of them. Back in November, HG&E had said that cited increased global demand for natural gas and shortages in domestic supply and the Russian incursion in Ukraine, and the utility projected a 32% increase in natural gas prices. Happily, it was a little bit less.
Thank you. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition of this article? Comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 11. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 11 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 12, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer an amount totaling $4,876.85 within the town-wide and municipal department operating budget accounts as listed in Article 12 of the May 9, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, said sums to come from the FY23 accounts listed above.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Mr. Moderator, probably two separate areas. One is that the town had actually ordered and entered into a lease for a new photocopier due to, shall we say, supply-side issues. It took longer to come in, so we had to keep the older, more expensive photocopier for a period of time. And also, that account covers copy paper, which has also increased dramatically. The other is energy costs and some town hall expenses, which were unexpected.
Thank you. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion under Article 12. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 12 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 13, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer an amount totaling $6,181.33 within the employee benefits operating budget, workers' compensation from the health insurance budget account, said sums to come from fiscal year 2023 accounts as listed in Article 13 of the May 9, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Mr. Moderator, this would cover the costs from our fiscal year '22, or workers' comp audit. Due to the audit, we were invoiced for another $6,181.33.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition of this article? Comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 13. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 13 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 14, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer an amount totaling $13,000 to the accounting independent audit budget account from the accounts as listed in Article 14 of the May 9, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Mr. Moderator, when we went out for a request for proposals for three years of audit services, when the proposals came back, the contracted amounts for fiscal year '23 had gone up considerably, so this $13,000 would cover that shortfall to do the fiscal year '22 audit.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition of this article? Comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 14. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 14 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 15, which is different from the one that you have in your handout?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer or appropriate an amount totaling $102,468.33 from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation within the Fire EMS Department operating budget accounts, specifically $250 to EMS certification, $27,500 to ambulance EMS expense accounts, $2,500 to Fire EMS building expense account, $48,314.66 to EMT wages, and $22,153.67 to the Fire Department wages for the fiscal year 2023 budget.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this?
Mr. Moderator, the bad news is that prices are going up for medical supplies and gas and everything else. We've also spent more money on wages this year, but with those wages, we're covering more calls. The good part of this whole equation is that we have gained more revenue, just about equal to the amount that we're asking for, into the ambulance receipts account, so it near balances out.
Thank you. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition of this article? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. Motion for Article 15, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 15 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 16, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $10,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to a town hall capital account to fund the necessary code upgrade repairs to the town hall elevator.
Thank you. Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Mr. Moderator, the state has updated and changed their elevator code requirements, specifically to the fireman's key operation. The cost to upgrade our town hall elevator, which will need to be done before the next annual elevator inspection in August, is $10,000.
Thank you. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition of this article? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. We need a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion for Article 16, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 16 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds majority requirement. May I hear a motion for Article 17, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $73,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to a police capital account to fund the purchase of a Ford F-150 or equivalent pickup truck to be equipped as a cruiser as replacement for an existing police cruiser.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Ian Ilwesworth, Police Chief. Currently, the Police Department has five cruisers in service. Three of those five have over 100,000 miles on them. Three of those five cruisers have over 100,000 miles on them, in particular, two. One has about 130,000 miles and the other about 140,000 miles.
Thank you. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition of this article? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. A motion for Article 17 needs two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 17 is unanimous. Vote, and it meets our two-thirds majority. Motion for Article 18, please, and that is changed from your handout.
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $38,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to a Fire EMS capital account to fund the purchase and installation of vehicle exhaust extraction equipment to be installed at the 204 College Highway Fire EMS Station.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
$38,000, I heard the question, I'm back. Mr. Moderator, we were challenged with this only because the Fire Department has a few needs. We were really hoping to, this one needs to go through because it's clean air in the fire station so that the working conditions, we're not breathing that diesel fumes in our office. The ready room is right in the same garage area as the equipment. So we put this forward to get this equipment, to make the stations a safer place for people to be, especially as we're there 24/7. But we wrestled only because we were also trying to get a tanker upgrade. Unfortunately, there wasn't enough money to fund the tanker upgrade, but there is this proposal and firefighter safety, just trying to take care of the men and women that put their time for this town.
Thank you. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition of this article? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. A motion under Article 18 needs a two-thirds majority for approval. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The vote is unanimous, meeting a two-thirds majority. May I hear a motion for Article 19, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $16,672 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to a Norris Elementary capital account to fund the repair and painting of the north wing lockers.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Aliza Pluta, Principal here at Norris School. I've been vetted before. This is to repair the hardware and paint with electrostatic painting the lockers in the fifth and sixth grade wing, which have been here since the school was built in 1957. And to replace those lockers, it would be $56,000. So we thought it would be fiscally responsible to just paint them and repair them at this time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone who wish to speak in opposition? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. The motion for Article 19, all those, needs a two-thirds majority for approval. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 19 passes by, it's unanimous, and it meets our two-thirds majority. Motion for Article 20, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $16,750 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to a town hall capital account to fund the replacement and installation of repairs to the town hall concrete main entrance and sidewalk and accessible walkway.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Mr. Moderator, this would address some, what I will call, possible tripping hazards at town hall, and whether you call it the back or the main entrance by the flags, the landing pad there, a number of the concrete or whatever the material is, squares have started to deteriorate, and that has become a safety issue. This would also address some concrete work along the handrail of the handicap ramp and some concrete squares which have started to crack down at the end where the senior center is. The senior center, that door on the left, which it would be, you could say is their main entrance, has a little concrete ramp which is also deteriorated, so that's becoming a little bit of an issue too, and it would also address a couple of cracks in the foundation of the building itself.
Thank you. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition of this article? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. The motion for Article 20, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 20 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds majority requirement. May I hear a motion for Article 21, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to take all necessary and appropriate action to establish and to maintain, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 164, Sections 34 and 47(c) of the general laws, and in accordance with the rules, regulations, and orders of the Department of Public Utilities and the Department of Telecommunications and Cable, a municipal lighting plant for all purposes allowable under the laws of the Commonwealth, including without limitation the operation of a telecommunications system and any related services.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please? Somebody from the committee? There you go.
Hello, Dan LaValle, 17 Glendale Road, member of the technology committee, or the ad hoc technology committee. So this is the second vote that we would be having on a municipal light plant. People are going to go, what's municipal light plant? Basically, it's allowing us to develop fiber optic internet in our town, so similar to what our neighboring towns like Westfield has done, or I think South Hadley, Holyoke. This would allow, by voting this, this allows us to continue the effort to get fiber in our town, so.
Good. Thank you. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition of this article? Any questions, any comments? Seeing none, we'll vote. Needs two-thirds majority for approval. All those in favor of the motion in Article 21, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 21 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds majority requirement. May I hear a motion for Article 22, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law Chapter 40, Section 5b, to create a new special purpose stabilization fund to be known as the Opioid Settlement Stabilization Fund, which may be expended for all of the purposes allowed by law, including those outlined in applicable opioid litigation settlement documents, a document prepared by the Substance Abuse Bureau of the Commonwealth's Office of Health and Human Services Department, found at http://mass.gov-doc Massachusetts Abatement Terms Download entitled "Abatement Strategies" and consistent with any state guidelines or regulations further clarifying allowable uses of opioid litigation settlement funds, and further to adopt the last paragraph of said Section 5b and dedicate to such fund without further appropriation 100% of the opioid litigation settlement funds received by the town.
Thank you. Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please? You're getting good at this.
So the town has, the Select Board has re-voted to accept some opioid settlement funds, which will be coming in, to have an account to, shall we say, house those funds in to be able to spend it by appropriation at a town meeting in the future for substance abuse. The recommended, shall we say, avenue is to create a stabilization account. So we are here to request the town approve that. It does require a two-thirds vote of the town meeting.
Yes, thank you. Anyone who wish to speak in opposition? Any comments, any questions? Any comments, any questions?
Comment. Vicky Morrow, Palmeri Meadow Road, Chair of the Finance Committee. The governor has put forth a supplemental budget, and within that supplemental budget, there is a legislation put forth by the Division of Local Services to let the Bureau of Accounts Director create special revenue funds purposely for these types of issues, where the state says, hey, we're going to give you a boatload of money, we're not quite sure how you're going to account for it yet, but this would give the director permission to establish, without having special legislation go through the Senate, to be able to set up these funds, so that the funds from the opioid would be directly put into those special revenue funds, and you wouldn't necessarily have to wait for free cash to be certified in order to get the funds, to put them into the stabilization fund, and then vote them out. It's, and they've, the governor has voted yes on this, and they're just waiting for the rest of the legislation to vote for the supplemental budget. So in my personal opinion, I would hold off until that legislation is passed. That way, you don't have to wait for free cash to be certified, and if it's not certified on time, and it's May, like it was this year, you're waiting a whole year before you put those monies in, in that you can actually spend them. So I would hold off, waiting till that legislation gets passed.
Thank you. Any other comments, any other questions? Seeing none, we're going to vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article twenty-two, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay, we need the counters. This needs a two-thirds majority, as we indicated. So all those in favor of this motion, raise your cards high, your orange cards. And we're counting from front to back. This is, oh, for, all those indicating, voting aye, voting yes.
Two.
Two.
Seven.
Seven.
Okay, all those opposed to this article, raise your cards.
Sixteen.
Twenty.
Eight.
Did we do the answer there?
Sixteen.
How much?
Sixteen, one-six.
Sixteen, one-six. The motion for Article twenty-two fails, eighteen yeses, sixteen nos. May I hear the motion for Article twenty-three, please?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to set the limitation on expenditures for each revolving fund be established according to Article twenty-three of the May ninth, twenty-twenty-three annual town meeting.
Motion made, Dwyer second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Mr. Moderator, this article will set the spending limits for each of the revolving funds the town has.
Thank you. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of this article? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article twenty-three. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article twenty-three passes unanimously. Now the moment of the evening, we're going to go over twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, because we already voted on them. See you in Article twenty-eight, turn your pages. I got page eighteen on the bottom. There are a motion for Article twenty-eight, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to name the East Street Bridge in memory of John V. Garska and provide signage thereto as set forth in Article twenty-eight of the warrant for the May ninth, twenty-twenty-three annual town meeting, or take any action thereto.
Motion made, Dwyer second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Parento, twenty-four Cold Spring Road. And John was my father-in-law, and pretty much my second father. So I'm up here representing his family, proudly representing them in this request. When I first met him, back in seventy-nine, eighty, somewhere, back in seventy-nine, Southampton wasn't as young a community as it is now. And there are a lot of the older senior citizens here probably know about John. But there's a lot of folks here that probably don't, so if you'll allow me to give them a little history, I'd like to. John grew up in Southampton on a farm located on Cold Spring Road, he was one of seven kids. He went to the school, a one-room schoolhouse, it was located at the corner of Palmeri Meadow and Glendale Road, but now it's at Conant Park. He graduated from Smith Agricultural School, nineteen forty, with a diploma in carpentry. John was a World War II veteran, prisoner of war, Gold Star, and Purple Heart recipient. He was wounded at the Battle of Mortain, the lost battalion, where the battalion was on a hill surrounded by Germans. He fought in the Battle of the Bulge, where a grenade was thrown into his foxhole, and as he threw it out, it exploded. His hands were severely damaged, and he was taken prisoner there and held until the end of the war. John started out with the town in nineteen forty-eight. He was the only highway employee, and he had his work cut out for him. He went on to build over sixty miles of roads, and when I say built the roads, that's what he did. He didn't source out the work. And at that time, up until he retired, the Highway Department laid all the pipes, did all the grating, and helped with the paving of the roads. He was a very creative man, and he said, why buy something if you can make it? And throw something away? No, didn't happen. He was an old farmer at heart, and if he needed something, he would just say, wait a minute, he'd walk out to his barn, maybe a few minutes, maybe an hour or two later, he'd come back with something that would make it work. Creating a magic box was something he did for the highway. He used it on a grader to lay asphalt down to level, patch, and smooth roads in an efficient manner, before they were resurfaced with oil and stone. And that became a popular item around other communities. And then there was the patch pan, that was also attached to the back of a truck. And that made the tedious spring task of patching potholes easier. That was also adopted by a lot of surrounding towns. After he retired, he was available to the next superintendent, Ed Colley, to help him as needed, and he also helped the other superintendents in surrounding towns, especially in Chesterfield. In closing, John loved Southampton. He especially loved the children of Southampton, did many things for them, freezing an ice skating rink, no cost, you know, out of his own free will. He wasn't ever looking for praise, never tooted his own horn. So that's what we're here for, we're going to try to toot his horn. And we humbly ask that you vote for this measure. Thank you.
Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this article? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote, the motion for Article twenty-eight, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article twenty-eight passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article twenty-nine, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to name the new accessible playground at LeBree Field, Matty's Magical Playground, in memory of Matty Schmidt, and provide signage thereto as set forth in Article twenty-nine of the warrant for the May ninth, twenty-twenty-three annual town meeting, or take any other action thereto.
Motion made, Dwyer second. Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Juliette Locke, one-oh-six Crooked Ledge Road. Again, thank you all for listening to our stories about Matty, and we really appreciate the opportunity to name this playground after her, Matty's Magical Playground. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody want to speak in opposition? Anybody have any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article twenty-nine, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article twenty-nine passes unanimously. Hey, we made it to the thirties. Can I hear a motion for Article thirty, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to renumber and recaption the general bylaws of the town by, A, assigning a chapter, article, number to each of the general bylaws, B, renumbering each section of each bylaw accordingly, C, inserting chapter, article, section, and subsection titles, and D, updating internal references to reflect the new numbering system. All is set forth in the final draft of the Code of the Town of Southampton, dated March twenty-twenty-three, and Article thirty of the warrant for the May ninth, twenty-twenty-three annual town meeting, or take any action thereto.
Motion made, Dwyer second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak for this?
Francine Tishman, Glendale Road, member of the Bylaw Review Committee. The process of recodifying the bylaws enabled us to organize them into content areas that had related content and purpose. For example, the new administrative section now includes all bylaws related to the structure and function of town government and its administrative responsibilities, like town meeting, Select Board, town administrator, treasurer-collector, town clerk, finance committee, et cetera. Because of this reorganization, as you heard, all bylaws had to subsequently be renumbered. Our current bylaws require that changes like renumbering have to be approved at town meeting. This new system will allow for future additions by adding them to the appropriate section, rather than just sticking them in chronological order at the end of the bylaws. This will facilitate a better understanding of our town's government, of our town's government structure, and its function. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of this article? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article thirty. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article thirty passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article thirty-one, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept all the changes in the town's general bylaws as presented in the final draft of the Code of the Town of Southampton dated March twenty-twenty-three and is set forth in Article thirty-one of the warrant for the May ninth, twenty-twenty-three annual town meeting.
That's good. We're, by the way, we're on page thirty. I have a motion, do I, I have a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Francine Tishman, Glendale Road, member of the Bylaw Review Subcommittee Committee. This article details the edits made to a number of bylaws to ensure clarity, consistency of language, and improve the comprehensiveness of the information. It specifies uniformity in citing state regulations, changes some wording, and reverses wording, like replacing permit with licensing, and corrects even some typos, I mean, some simple modifications like that. Most importantly, the revisions remove specific fines and penalties within some bylaws, like parking in fire lanes, and consolidates them into an individual bylaw that can be periodically updated by changing one bylaw, as opposed to having to go through this process for each individual bylaw that imposes a fine or a penalty. That new chapter is referred to as Chapter two-oh-three F. I just wanted to make certain that everyone understands that this article does not make substantive changes to any of the existing bylaws. It only makes restatements in clearer language to ensure that everyone understands. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of this article? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article thirty-one. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article thirty-one passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article thirty-two, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Southampton zoning map, ZBL, Section three dash B, by changing the zoning designation of a parcel of land consisting of fourteen point seven plus or minus acres and located at the southwest corner of College Highway and Valley Road, also identified on Assessor's Map thirty-nine, Parcel twenty-six, and is shown on a plan prepared by Heritage Surveys Incorporated. Proposed change, proposed zone change area, industrial park parentheses I dash P to commercial highway parentheses C dash eight, Map thirty-nine, Parcel twenty-six, Eugene LeBree, College Highway and Valley Road, Southampton, from the present zoning designation of industrial park I dash P to commercial highway C dash eight.
Motion made, Dwyer second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Paul Deamon, Planning Board. On February fifteenth this year, the Planning Board held a public hearing for this zone change request. And after listening to the proposal, the board deliberated and voted in favor of the change. And reasons being particularly, we see it as an economic development move for the town. It has been in industrial for pretty close to twenty-five years, with no development, obviously, probably due to the lack of infrastructure, mainly sewer. However, the property owner has had several inquiries from smaller businesses, service-type businesses, a brewery, a restaurant. And on the property is the iconic Red Barn, which they have spent thousands of dollars to renovate, and that will be preserved for someone to either open a new business or relocate from somewhere else. We're asking the town to approve this, so it will increase employment opportunities, business, in a highway business district, per se. And I know it's a beautiful area, and a gateway to town, and it is ideal for some small businesses to come and open up shop, rather than a truck depot or something, a large manufacturing plant, which is probably out of the question these days, the industrial age is behind us. So I'd ask for the town's approval on this.
Thank you. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this article? Any comments, any questions?
Like an ice cream cone.
Yeah.
Tammy Walunas, College Highway, Southampton. Mr. Moderator. Fact, boards and committees are elected in Southampton. Fact, two thousand nineteen, number two ninety-eight College Highway paid taxes of eight thousand nine hundred seventy dollars and eighty, excuse me, fifty-eight cents. In two thousand nineteen, twenty-two Palmeri Meadow In 2019, 22 Palm Ray Meadow condominiums, 31 of them, paid $105,726.74. Fact, 2023, 219, or excuse me, 298 College Highway taxes paid $10,976.75. Fact, Parsons Village proposed 30 single-family 55 and over condos with four affordable housing units being in it. Low-bill cost, $30,000, which would be taxes of $4,299. Forty units, that's $171,960. So 1-7-1-9-6-0 in revenue to the town. Fact, this project and many others have been voted down, and I'm questioning, with all of these, um, business opportunities and developments coming into town, how are we expected to cover this override? Well, that revenue to the town would have been half of that. I highly recommend that we vote yes to change so we can get more businesses in town. Please.
Thank you. Thank you for your opinion. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Any comments? Any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. Yeah, please. No, he's just holding his hands on his lap.
I'm not speaking in favor or against. My name is Maureen Groden, H. Hurle Lane. I just have a couple of questions. So when this land was purchased back, I assume, 25 years ago, it was purchased as industrial park, and I believe at that time that a business was built on that property, and then the building, the business has since been, um, expanded on that particular property. And, uh, now there's an interest in, I'm just asking, is the interest in now transferring it over to, um, commercial and selling the land to people who are interested in coming into town and, uh, operating a small business? So that's what my question is. The handout, I know it might be an unofficial handout that we were given when we entered the building here.
It's unofficial.
It's unofficial. Uh, says that, uh, now there are several, um, requests of businesses that are industrial that might be interested, but then I just heard the Planning Board chair say that there's been no interest in industrial development, uh, so now all of a sudden there is. So I just want to understand exactly what, uh, the plan is for the property.
Paul, you want to address that, please? Thank you, V.
Uh, I believe I said that there is more requests for small businesses for the commercial highway than industrial. The, the owner has fielded more requests from, uh, private businesses if the land was available to build on for commercial, and it currently is not. So the request is for, for commercial, not industrial.
May I answer your question?
So when someone comes in front of the Planning Board, do they have to specify what their plans are for the property? And if so, do the plans say that they're planning on selling off individual lots so that people can build, uh, have small businesses? Right now, up and down Route 10, between the bowling alley being sold and several other commercial lots, including lots owned at Zero College Highway, as well as the Harley-Davidson, we seem to have a lot of commercial property. So I'm just curious to know, when they come in front of the Planning Board, do they have to specify the plans for the property?
Thank you. Paul?
Uh, no, they do not. It's just a request that, uh, the owner would be fielding, uh, requests from businesses. And while it's not, uh, currently commercially zoned, then it says, I'm sorry, but there's nothing we do, do about that. But no, there are no plans that we have to see in order to change a zone.
May I answer your question? Great. Anybody else? Any comments? Any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 32. All those in favor, needs a two-thirds majority for approval. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
We need counters. What we're going to do since the counters, please? All those who voted nay, please raise your cards. Those who voted nays, nay. Negative, no's, raise your cards.
Three. Zero. One.
There are five nays. The article passes by majority, meeting its two-thirds majority requirement. And may I have a motion for Article 33, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to adopt the renumbering and revision of the zoning bylaw of the town as set forth in the final draft of the zoning bylaw dated March 2023, said renumbering and revision of the zoning bylaw having been done under the direction of the Planning Board and being a compilation and a comprehensive update of the present zoning bylaw, including amendments thereto. All zoning bylaws as amended, heretofore, enforced shall be repealed, except that such repeal shall not affect any suit or proceeding pending as the result of an existing law, as presented in Article 33 of the May 9, 2023 annual town meeting.
Motion made, or seconded?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Paul Demon, Planning Board. Seven and a half years ago, beginning in November of 2016, the Planning Board undertook the task of revising and amending zoning bylaws that, uh, there were no major changes in, since 1986. So 37 years is a long time to go without, um, trying to get things in a, uh, current state of affairs. And with the General Bylaws Committee working with General Code, who did the general bylaws, uh, now known as E-code, uh, we were able to, uh, also have, uh, E-code, General Code, go through the existing bylaws and correct language, um, typos, and particularly corrections to mass general law. And we have revised with some, uh, changes 15 out of 63 sections. Hopefully you all picked up a handout that was here tonight, which highlights the chapters that work had been done on, and the ones that were in asterisks were the ones that had what we felt were major changes. This is also, uh, in compliance with the requests made years ago from the master plan to, to get them updated. And, uh, with the help of Larry Smith, our retired, uh, Board Consultant, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and now our current, uh, Consultant, Richard Harris, we were able to, uh, piecemeal this for seven and a half years with a very dedicated Board and, uh, made the changes that you have before you tonight. And it's been a long process, and we, we hope, uh, that you'll look upon them favorably. And Richard Harris is here to answer any technical questions, uh, any of the residents may have.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition of this motion under this Article 33? Anybody have any questions? Any comments? Well, seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article, and it's two-thirds majority required for approval. All those in favor of the motion on Article 33, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 33 passes unanimously. Meeting our two-thirds majority. That includes our business for the night. I will entertain a motion now.
Motion to adjourn.
Our annual town meeting. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
This annual town meeting is dissolved. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thanks, Ms. Lucy Doll and our town clerk.